Good evening and welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting, September 17th, 2013. Please follow the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our agenda this evening is under Planning and Zoning. Trustee Cammerer?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several things under Planning and Zoning this evening. We're going to start off with the Walgreens rezoning, resubdivision, site plan review, special use and variations. And at this point, I would ask Jim to take over.
Thank you, Trustee Cammerer. This is the Walgreens project with the petitioner is Bartlett Venture One. You've seen this before, before it went out to its public hearings, is now coming back to you. It's located at the northeast corner of Route 59 and Sterns Road. And just to refresh your memory, it's a resubdivision of the existing Brewster Creek Center, and it's a plat of consolidation of what is portion of Lot Two and the old Clark Gas Station that used to be at the northeast corner, and creating a new Lot One in that subdivision. They're rezoning the portion of the shop, or the gas station right here that was Zone B2, and it's going to be, they're asking to rezone it B3, neighborhood shopping, which is the same zoning as the rest of the shopping center. There's a site plan review for Lots One and Two, including the new Walgreens, and then the remainder of the site, which will basically stay the same. They're asking for a special use permit for the Walgreens for packaged liquor. Currently Walgreens does have one, and they're asking for seven variations in the site. A 34-foot reduction from the required 50-foot corner side yard along Route 59. A 1.4-foot reduction of the required 30-foot rear yard, which is on the north end of the Walgreens site. The canopy encroachment within the required corner and interior side yards of more than three feet, generally the canopies for the building and the drive-through. A reduction in the required 20-foot interior parkway landscaping with requirement at Sterns and 59. Parking encroaching in the 50-foot front and corner yards along Sterns and 59. Reduction in the 180-foot parking stall measurement to 162-foot, which is typically a standard measurement these days. And a reduction in the number of required parking spaces for Lot One of nine parking spaces. The petitioner has, is the proposal, in addition to all that, is to build the new Walgreens on Lot One. A 14,820-square-foot building that would have a 24-hour operation with a drive-through pharmacy. Walgreens typically goes to that in its new standalone nut projects. The entrances generally will remain the same along Sterns Road, the in and out at Sterns Road, and then the widened Route 59 entrance, per IDOT's review of this, at the right-in, right-out along 59, and then circulating into the site. One of the unique features of this site is that the entrance into the parking lot for Walgreens is for the, obviously, the car traffic, and the exit at this, there is a no-left turn into this, and then right out only at this point in the, which would be the southwest corner, or southeast corner of the property. Truck traffic for the deliveries will enter in primarily off of 59 and enter and deliver in the back of the store. Those are for the smaller trucks. The big trucks will come in at off-peak times and just enter in the shopping center and then deliver at Walgreens, and not during primary times. And then there's a drive-through on the east side of the property, the proposed site. They've gone through the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. The traffic analysis has been done. We have our traffic engineer, as well as our environmental consultant, because there is a portion of this site that has some environmental issues at the corner, and those have to be remediated according to their no further remediation letter, which they have received. The Plan Commission recommended approval with all the staff, conditions and findings of fact, and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with their findings of fact. And the minutes, the picture of the building, which I forgot to show you, is up now, but the minutes of both public hearings are included in the package, as well as information that we have provided as far as the traffic analysis, the landscape plan, the different landscaped areas, the traffic flow. I'm just showing a picture of the site. You can see it's the vacant parking lot and the vacant side of Clark's. There was a last-minute list of conditions that we received from one of the neighbors, Mr. Lewis, who spoke to you earlier, and I've handed that out to the petitioner, as well as all the board members. So that is information that we just received today. And the petitioner is here, and he's got all his experts, and I'm sure he's ready to answer any of your questions.
Jim, could you go back to that plat? Is this the actual final plat, or is it the one we have in our package, showing the entrance off of 59 coming into, you know, the right-hand entrance? It should be different than what we actually have in our packets there. That, okay.
This Lot One site plan does not include what, at this time, what IDOT has recommended, and I believe this one is the more radius curve, but they have to meet, IDOT reviewed it, they would not let them do this taper. And so this, what they did, want them to open up the radius on that entrance way. So that's all IDOT would allow. So the plans you have here, as they progress through, the final plan will have to meet all the conditions. That's why some of the conditions are written and not in the maps, because they don't, they'll do those final maps and final plans based on all of our conditions and the ordinance that we'll approve. This is really more of the, for the landscaping, though, this particular one.
Is there any discussion by the board?
Is that the, that's the existing entrance into the mall now, correct?
This, right here, is the existing entrance?
I know, but from 59, I mean.
It doesn't have that triangle.
No, they, this is, the entrance off of, I don't know if I have a picture of it, let me see. I don't. Let me go back to the overall plan. That shows, this site plan shows pretty close to what it looks like.
I got it.
This one's maybe, this is a little small, we'll see that, but that's what it looks like now. What's going to happen is this radius is going to be opened up, so there will be a little wider entrance into there. And that's all IDOT would allow. There was a proposed taper that was to come off of 59, and IDOT would not allow that.
And the exit to Sterns Road is on the left side of this drawing?
Yes, Sterns Road entrance and exit is basically going to remain the same. The only thing that's going to change, and I don't, this is, that's why I pulled this one, it's a little bigger. This exit out of the Walgreens' proposed parking lot is going to be right out. You can't turn, you can't come into Sterns and turn left in here. You have to go all the way back here to the second entrance and then end. And you can only come out this way. But this Sterns Road configuration is going to stay the same, as you see.
For how long?
I'm sorry, I-
That Sterns Road configuration is going to stay that way for how long?
Well, for this project it is. Now, if the county decides to make some changes to Sterns Road, I don't, I can't predict what they're going to do in the future.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a recommendation.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Then you do as a comment.
I speak up. Again, my name's Richard Lewis. I live at 868 Braintree in Bartlett, right behind the current Walgreens location, and we have some other neighbors here that live along Braintree. We expressed a number of concerns about this, and, you know, one of them is the capacity for that intersection, and as we understand it, IDOT is currently looking at perhaps doing some reconstruction of that area. And we are certainly concerned that if some of this were approved, do you begin to handcuff what IDOT can do in terms of widening Sterns, perhaps the right-turn lane, or those types of things? So, you know, that's one concern. The other is, I think we may perhaps a little more inclined to look on this proposal in a favorable light, but we haven't had particularly good relationship in history with the current strip mall there. And, you know, I think we've had a couple of discussions just previous to this about that, but, you know, I think the residents feel that that area is not very well-maintained. I know the mall thinks that it is very well-maintained. And so we kind of go back and forth on those types of things and get concerned about what's going to happen once this is approved, if it were approved. What happens to the existing location? It's a very large area, certainly a concern for us of what may go in there that could adversely impact the neighborhood. The other part of it is, is the traffic. The traffic going along and cutting through Norwood and Braintree has been a long outstanding issue for us in this neighborhood, and we've been, before this board, on a number of occasions as different things have come up, such as when the mall was first being built, there was concern about traffic. But it's like, eh, it's not going to be a whole lot, so, you know, you can kind of live with it, it's for the good of the village. Then we get a daycare center that came in, again, we're in front of the board saying, we're not sure about the traffic, again, for the good of the village. McDonald's came in, there was an argument about that. So it kind of continues that, okay, we keep shoving stuff into this space, how much is it going to actually hold? Is the capacity really there to shove something like this in there? And obviously, I think it'd be hard for anyone to argue that, boy, let's do something with that lot, it is an ugly, ugly site. But are we squeezing something in there that just simply doesn't, simply doesn't fit? The email that I did send today was some things that a couple of neighbors, and I certainly don't want to say that that represents the entire neighborhood in terms of some things that we would like to see to beautify the area, do some screening between the residential area and the shopping center. So please don't take that as something that a whole bunch of people necessarily put together. But again, I've talked a little bit just tonight with some of the owners, and I think we want to sit down and talk about what is a true and strategic way to evaluate this proposal, and what's the best interest for the village? Is this truly the best interest for the village? You know, the location really, as you begin to think about, does that fit? Why not look at other locations in this village? There are numerous other locations in this village. Certainly the strip mall across the street has a large capacity, especially when you begin to look at the Ness Cafe area. There's an area north of, I believe it's Apple Tree Lane, or south, I guess, Apple Tree Lane in Route 59, wide open, I think it's 10 acres or more that's open there. Now, again, I think from Walgreens' perspective, I know that the corner store is ideal, maybe that doesn't fit in. But if we look at then 59 and West Bartlett Road, there are certainly two large corner lots there that would have the capacity for a large building, ample parking, and certainly would have the advantage of, again, a large traffic area, close to two retirement villages with huge prescription volume, and certainly would give some, you know, a nice entryway into the downtown area, which I know is a concern for all of us, how do we get traffic to come in off of 59 and into the village? So there's certainly alternatives to this location. But, you know, again, I think we want to look at a specific plan of what's acceptable beautification and maintenance for the shopping center, including the rear of the building. You know, I think, and I've been asked this question, which is, you know, you moved in behind a strip mall, what did you expect? Well, I got to tell you, unless you lived in our shoes, you have no idea what you have to expect when you live behind a strip mall like that. And I think it's beyond what's reasonable currently. And I think the more important question is really to the shopping center owners, which is, you built a shopping center right behind a residential neighborhood, what did you expect? Do you expect that we're just going to allow this to just keep expanding and expanding, and the traffic is okay to come rushing down your street day after day, and those types of things? So I think it's important to look at the whole thing. So, you know, I think before this were ever be approved, I would like to sit down, and maybe the village, with the owners and start to say, okay, what is an acceptable plan for this corner in the long term and this strip mall, before we approve it? Once it's approved, we really have no leverage left in terms of what could go into the old Walgreens? Could it be a bar, live bands, you know, those type of things? I'm not opposed to bars and live bands necessarily, unless it's right behind my house, and then I am. So there's some things that I think we could certainly look at there that would be for the good of the village and for the entire neighborhood. So I appreciate you listening.
Good evening. I'm Tom Rymars. I live at 1537 Greenleaf Court. I've lived in Bartlett for 31 years. For more than half of those years, I've driven by the corner of Sterns and 59 and looked at that eyesore, that vacant lot. I'm all for the Walgreens moving into that spot. It'll improve the site. I'm for utilizing the drive-up, because right now, I drive to Hanover Park, it's easier to get in and out of there with a prescription filled. I'm for the additional tax revenue that'll come to Bartlett rather than what's going to Walgreens that have drive-ups. I'm for also, I'm for, although I'll probably never see it happen, the additional taxes coming into Bartlett that might help reduce or maintain my taxes, my property taxes. I'd rather see my dollars spent here in Bartlett. Thanks.
I live at 838 Braintree. I'd like to ask permission to use the petitioner's, their PowerPoint there of the overall site plan. Was there another one? Maybe the overall site plan will do. But, you know, I read part of the traffic report where they were measuring the signal cues for people going to Sterns up to 59, and one signal cue, the traffic was, could all get through the light. I think a large reason for that is, a lot of that traffic is not waiting for the light. They're running down Braintree and up Norwood, because it's much, much faster to get to 59, and they're just bypassing the light, it goes on all the time. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. If this is approved, maybe a no-right-hand turn in there during certain hours, something to start to reduce that traffic there. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Lori Abbott. I'm at 847 Braintree. I didn't prepare anything, I just wanted to come and listen about the Walgreens plan, but now I'd like to say something. I have to echo off my neighbors, Richard and Steve, they're absolutely right about the traffic. In fact, I called the Bartlett Police Department this morning because I was taking the garbage out after I walked my daughter to the bus, and everybody is flying down Braintree, as you know, and I had to turn the trash can so the arrows point out, and there was four cars that were trying to avoid the light, and nobody was heading southbound, but these cars going northbound, they didn't even swerve, they were probably within 36 inches of me. So it bothered me, I called, and I said, enough's enough, I understand that they're doing something that's going to help, but they also should monitor this traffic, especially when the children are going to the bus to and from. And as far as Walgreens, I don't think it's a good idea. I think down by West Bartlett Road is fantastic. Down by that retirement center is an excellent location. There is too much going into that mall, I don't think they care about what goes into that mall. I know they don't care what the mall looks like, and if you've driven by, it's outdated. The traffic plan is not good. My daughter currently takes taekwondo there, and frankly, I can't wait till she's finished, because it's dangerous, and I will not let her go by herself. It's dangerous, so I hope you consider this carefully.
I have a suggestion. I don't have a horse in this race, but listening to what they were saying about Braintree, I know when I worked in Schaumburg, there's certain areas, Schaumburg, Hoffnitz Straits, where during business traffic, you'll have like no right turn or no left turn, so that you can't cut through residential areas. Maybe that's a fix for these, where these people live behind the strip mall, is make it so people that are doing business there can't turn onto their streets. Just an idea.
Is there anything stopping us for no-through traffic signs, or, maybe they're not enforceable, but maybe that might dissuade some people traveling down their streets, especially at these times? To get, because I actually have done the same thing, except I usually go Kingston, the back way, especially when they were doing the digging over by Beaver Pond.
I know, we have them across the railroad tracks where you can't turn in certain hours.
Yeah. I mean, that would help these folks out.
Chief, have we considered something like that for traffic control, or?
To this point, no, we haven't brought anything before the board. We do respond to the congestion, it is congested, there are cut-through traffics down there, and we do our best under the ordinances that have already been passed. So, yeah, if the board wanted to consider additional signage, we could put a study together to give you some options on that.
I think that's an easy direction.
Yeah, I think at the very least, at the very least, we need some car counts on Braintree.
Yeah.
I don't want to shoot from the hip and go putting up more signs until we have some, at least some data to work off of, you know, are we finding out that, well, yeah, it's 100 cars a day, which is maybe normal for that side street, or we had 700 cars a day, which is really abnormal. And I'm not in any way discounting what the residents have told us. I live on a dead-end street, sometimes it seems it's too busy, so I know what you're And it seems like traffic is, we all know the traffic at 59 and Sterns is a major concern, and we know that, or we believe that IDOT's going to do some work there soon, hopefully, sooner rather than later. So this is, this is a really difficult portion of this project for me personally, is the traffic implications. I could probably go on for a half hour about it, and I won't, but those are, I echo the residents' concerns, and I think everybody who lives in Bartlett's concerns, just about the traffic in that area. That's what I'm struggling with.
I would ask, have we actually considered whether this does or does not handcuff us in the future for IDOT's potential work at 59 and Sterns? Has that been addressed?
Well, here's the difficult issue with that. We have very little, we have little-to-know information about what it is they're going to propose, when they're going to propose it, how much right-of-way they would want, or, we just don't have any information to do that calculation.
But, I mean, can we draw on traffic counts that are going east and west on Sterns that are existing now and anticipate what may happen?
One of the things that the petitioner is doing is he's dedicating some additional land for future right-of-way on Sterns Road for any proposed expansion that could occur there. That's one of the reasons that he asked for the variances because of that right-of-way, but at this time, we don't have any, any dimensions. But he did dedicate a portion of it, and they have, they, I don't know if you can see it, but they're doing this, what they call a corner cut, so this portion of property right here is going to be dedicated as future right-of-way-
Okay.
-to the highway entity.
I think at the last meeting, I believe it was our traffic engineer-
Yes, it was.
...who essentially assured me that he didn't think there would ever be, there are standards, a need for a right-turn lane on westbound Route 59 on a northbound, excuse me, westbound Sterns on a northbound 59.
Our consult, traffic consultant, Mr. Coulter, is here, if you have any questions or you want him to restate some of that.
Perhaps he could address that just briefly, wherever Mr., he's hiding way in the back there.
I think any count we do right now, anyway, on Sterns is not going to be accurate because of all the construction there, too.
Yeah, let's let the engineer discuss that.
Hello, yeah, what I gave you, I think what you're referring to at one of our, your committee of the whole meeting, actually, was, was my opinion that, based on the right-turn volume, westbound on Sterns to northbound on Route 59, that a right-turn lane was not warranted, based on the volume of right-turning traffic. And a right-turn lane on Sterns Road, westbound to northbound, was also not part of the preliminary scope that IDOT was proposing for the intersection. What we, what we know about the preliminary scope at this time is that it would involve southbound dual-left turn lanes on Route 59, northbound dual-left turn lanes on Route 59, eastbound dual-left turn lanes on Route 59, and a northbound, a south, excuse me, a southbound right-turn lane on Route 59. That's the scope of work that they used in the application for the federal funding that they, that they have already earmarked for that construction job. But there will be a Phase One study, which they're in the process of doing right now. There will be public involvement, and of course, the village will be involved in that process as a stakeholder, you know, in the area, to comment on the proposed plan. So as Valerie indicated, all we can do at this point is give you our best idea of what might happen. I should point out that, that IDOT has reviewed the site plan with respect to specifically, and probably a focus on the right-in, right-out on Route 59. There's also a signature block on the plat of resubdivision, which is signed because, because this resubdivision occurs at or along a state frontage, an arterial frontage with the IDOT jurisdiction. The district engineer will have to sign off on that plat. So they've had, not only their permit engineers, but the district engineer himself will have to sign off on the plat before the plat of subdivision is finally approved. So that's some assurance that you have, that IDOT is going to be taking a look at this to make sure that it does fit into the scope of their potential intersection expansion.
I'd probably feel a lot more comfortable if that IDOT engineer lived on Braintree, but-
Or Norwood.
Or Norwood. What impact would a traffic count on Norwood or Braintree have on your, your professional opinion that we won't need a right turn off of westbound Sterns on a northbound 59? In other words, do you take that into your, I realize that you didn't study this specifically for that intersection as far as making that right turn on the northbound 59. But if you were to make a study about that, would you take into consideration the amount of traffic that's avoiding that turn completely by going through the residential neighborhood down Braintree and onto Norwood? Or is that not really even coming into play?
No, it's relevant information, and I've never seen a study to that effect, and I think your idea is a good one, that before we just go off and shooting with ideas about what, what we do with Sterns and what we do at Braintree at Sterns and Norwood, in terms of maybe traffic cutting through from Norwood, onto Norwood, and then back down onto Braintree, that there probably should be a study that addresses to what extent that kind of cut-through traffic is already occurring. What we have right now, what I've seen, are the right turns that exist on Sterns at 59. If there's, if, if the number of right turns from Sterns captured by Braintree to Norwood and then right turning onto Route 59 is very, very high, that could- and then right turning onto Route 59, is very, very high, that could be significant. But I've never seen that information.
That's all I have for him. Don't go too far.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I'd like to hear from the petitioner, if you'd like to rebut anything, or-
Hi, I'm Tom Helgath. I'm the petitioner. With regard to the local traffic in the area going, cutting off of each major road here, what I found to be very helpful would be put down local traffic only. And then if you begin ticketing people who go down there, it'll be well-known that if you do cut through there, there will be, you'll get a ticket. If you do put local traffic only, that will definitely help. Up in my neighborhood, they have it that way, and believe me, people have learned, and they don't, they don't cut through in the area where they don't live. Okay? And that would help. Thank you.
I'm Jim Hall, 824 Redwood Lane. So, I don't have really a dog in this fight, but one question regarding from something Mr. Lewis mentioned. Who is the owner of this new property the same as the existing building? Who's going to own the new property?
Petitioner is Bartlett Venture 1 LLC.
Are they the owners of the existing property?
I do not know that.
Okay. So, you're dealing with, so you're dealing with two different entities then regarding the landscaping around the existing property and the new building? Okay. Anyway, let's go on. Secondly, regarding, one thing regarding traffic, I used to drive there every day to and from work, and one of the biggest problems there is that the light, the green light for Sterns Road is way shorter than it needs to be. Just a few seconds longer would greatly improve the traffic flow at that intersection, especially during rush hours when things really back up. Would hardly, I would think would have, I'm a retired manufacturing engineer. I would think would have very little impact on traffic on 59, but would greatly improve the flow on Sterns Road. And so, the third thing regarding traffic on Braintree, I used to work with a factory in Matamoros, Mexico. They would put speed bumps on major arterial streets in the middle of the day. And so, just kind of facetiously, something to consider on Braintree. Thank you.
As many of you know, I live in that subdivision, along with my neighbors there, and been listening to everybody's comments here, and a lot of good comments back and forth, traffic, safety, taxes for the village. No one's mentioned the traffic at the other side of this mall also, by the Dunkin' Donuts and the McDonald's. Eventually, if they do cut off the left turn from that strip mall onto Sterns, everybody's going to funnel out to Norwood. And there are traffic jams at Norwood and the McDonald's and the Dunkin' Donuts in the morning. I mean, the other day, I couldn't move because there was what they call a Mexican standoff. Everybody was making a left turn, right turn, and nobody could get through there. I think the best comment that anybody made was, this mall wasn't meant to be expanded at this point. I hate to see the tax revenues go away from this particular place, but it's not built for an expansion like this. So, let's weigh this very carefully, and it's a tough decision, but there are other opportunities in Bartlett also to keep Walgreens in town. Thank you.
My name is Dave Sia. I'm from 858 Bartlett, Braintree Lane. I got a piece of data. It's less than scientific, but I know most of the traffic going through Braintree Lane is from the mall, because every two to three days, I'm having to pick up McDonald's bags off of my parkway. Thank you.
If not, then, any of the comments for the board? If not, then I would suggest that we move this on to the, for a vote at the next meeting, then.
Are we able to get those car counts done before the next meeting?
The what?
Something that's possible.
A car count right now, only because it is at unprecedented levels right now. We can do it for you, and we will. I just, with the construction there, I have to vouch for the neighborhood. It is at all-time highs right now.
Because the next step would be final vote, correct?
Yes.
Just for additional information, I don't remember how many years ago, but there was a traffic study that measured the cut-through traffic and things about the time the sidewalks went into the area, and might be some helpful information. I know at the time, the traffic was increasing significantly then. I'm sure it has even more. So, it wouldn't be absolutely current, but at least it would be some data for you to look at.
And Mr. Lewis, have you noticed since construction, a significant increase? And you see it day in, day out, right? I mean, has it escalated tremendously since the construction started this year? Or has it always been that way?
Well, it's escalated certainly with the new construction, but it's always, it's been very heavy, and it continues to get heavy. And like I mentioned earlier, it's kind of as the new, as that area expands and more things go in there. And certainly, although I can't speak to it, but as the McDonald's went in and those types of things, it's continued. And of course, there's other open lots over by the oil masters that's waiting to be developed as well. So, you know, again, more traffic that cuts through there, so. And I should mention, I invited the, certainly the mall owners, I invite all of you, come visit, you know, come over, and the neighbors would be happy to show you around the street, show you what's going on at any time. You're all more than welcome. TL knows, but-
Well, I don't want to belabor this any more than we have, but it is a very big decision, and for me personally, it's kind of a difficult one. But, I mean, to that end, I guess, I would love to see when this does come up for final vote, that there's been some wonderful collaboration between the mall owners and the residents. Come up with all these really cool, inexpensive solutions to all their concerns, and the residents are 100% behind it. That being said, that's probably a fantasy, but those are some of my thoughts. And must the petitioner's got anything else they have to say? Okay. So, we decide we're going to be sending this back to-
Yeah, we're, you know, we're-
I'd like to add a comment, only if the board would take a look at this. We have the egress on Sterns Road from Walgreens. It still has a left-turn lane. I would like to see a porch up there. So, this way, there's a right-in and a right-out only, for safety reasons.
Under Sterns?
Yes. No left turn in, no left turn out.
Speaking for the petitioner, that left-turn lane onto Sterns has existed for 23 years. Actually, one of the highlights of this proposal, I believe, is the fact that the corner is going to be used as a parking lot, and will give greater visibility for whatever occurs on Sterns Road if IDOT does do the improvements. If the site was built just onto the corner, there are three approved full-access entrances into that site from the, remain from the old Clark Station. This proposal not only eliminates those three full-access sites, locations, but also drives somewhere to focus towards the 59 entrance. So, we're not asking for any new entrances or exits. We're improving onto one entrance on 59, which is the one I think everybody would want to see it improved. And we're, by backing the Walgreens off, leaving that area with greater visibility. So, I think this, from a traffic standpoint, and both, all of the consultants, I think, would say this is, they've all agreed that the amount of traffic that would be increased by Walgreens having to drive through this would be the minimalist, and so-
It's still not going to keep the people-
Show the whole picture.
Going south or northbound on 59.
Pardon?
They're still not going to keep the people who are going north on 59 and turning right onto Sterns, and then scooting over, parking, putting their turn signal on. Those people are going to get rear-ended from the left-turn lane off of 59.
You mean, you're talking from the left-turn lane into Sterns, into, into the center?
Something to consider. It's a safety issue. I haven't driven through that intersection in three years.
Sir, could you please-
I'm proud of it.
Sir, could you please state your name and address, just for the record for me?
My name's Dennis Kurtasey. My two sons are, through a family trust, are owners of part of both Bartlett Venture 1 and Brewster Creek.
And your address?
707 Fairview Lane, Bartlett.
Thank you.
My name is Wayne Rogers. I'm with Bartlett Ventures 1. I've been involved in this project since it began, the original shopping center. This was part of, I believe it's Campanelli's developed, was it Campanelli's? Yeah. And this was always wanting to be a commercial corner. When we developed this, the daycare, it was Children's World on Sterns Road, had a problem with access. We were asked to provide an exit for them coming into our lot, and you can see it on the picture above. These are mostly people that are from the east. They have to turn, can't turn, and go out eastbound on Sterns Road. They're going to come through Braintree and the other subdivisions. They have to. I agree with the neighbors. People cut through there. They also cut through the shopping center. When the lights turns, they have to the shopping center, go out the right-in, right-out, or the main drive. So, that is a problem, and I think something should be done with the cut-through traffic. Thank you.
Dennis, I have to agree with you. If you, if you're going west on Sterns, if you're actually up there and you're going to go east on Sterns, it might take you two minutes to wait, but you're not going to go through their neighborhood. So, that's, if you block that, people are going to go through their neighborhood to get on Sterns one block further south or two blocks. But if you're going west on Sterns, I'm sorry, start again. If you're going east on Sterns and you're on this lot trying to cut across, yeah, we should put a no-left turn there. So, that won't affect their neighborhood at all, and they just either stay on 59 and turn here.
Are you talking about a no-left turn just beyond the intersection?
Right where that bank is, the animal shelter on the other, yeah.
The animal hospital?
Yeah. So, if you're, you're coming towards where, you know, you're going, you've already crossed 59, and right where the bank is, you can't turn left, because-
Correct.
Yeah. We, correct. Yeah. Yeah. You can't do that. But if we, if we limit the people who are already in the parking lot to go left, they're going to go through, they're going to go through their neighborhood, adding more traffic. So, I think we should keep the left on the one, but they can't cross traffic to get into the Walgreens there. If they wanted, then they should have turned north, or they should have continued north. And they go into that right there, and that-
I think that's the idea, that somebody mentioned that the last time, too, that it will force people to go north on 59, because that is problematic. I drive by there every day when people are dropping kids off at their childcare, and that, that is problematic right there. People are trying to go left into, especially with the construction, they're trying to go left in to get their kids, and it backs it up past 59.
Yeah.
If I may-
Can you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Javier Milan. I'm a senior consultant with KLW Incorporated, and we conducted the traffic study for the Walgreens. I just wanted to bring out three issues that I, that I see, and it's regarding the proposed development. In our opinion, it's going to be an improvement over existing conditions for mainly three reasons. Somebody mentioned there's some existing curb cuts right now on 59 in close proximity to the intersection. There's, I believe, another one on Sterns. Those will be eliminated. That's a positive. Anytime you reduce or remove something that is too close on intersection, that's a positive, and it's going to be using existing cuts farther away from the intersection. Of all the possible land uses that could be developed, Walgreens is probably the most benign, given that it is currently there. So, it's not new traffic. They're just moving from their site to being an outlet or a freestanding one. So, so it's not something new. It's not a Burger King, that it's not there. It's not a Starbucks. It's not a gas station that wasn't there. It's already there. All they're looking to do is just move independently or freely, so. And last, the existing right-in, right-out, it's currently not up to code. It's actually a very tight right-in, right-out. As part of the plan, it's actually going to be relocated slightly north, and it's going to be actually designed and constructed to IDOT standards with bigger radiuses and bigger lanes. That's actually going to make it easier and more attractive for people to actually use the lane. And as you alluded, the whole idea is to try to capture as much as you can from 59. In this case, by doing that, anybody coming from the west on Sterns with whatever improvements the state might do, most likely will find it easier to actually make a left and go right in the right-in instead of making a left, as it was alluded, that left into Sterns. People coming from the south, I would venture to say 100% with the new design, will make it, will find it a lot easier to make a right instead of making a right and a left to go inside the shopping center. So, those three are some of the ideas that I had as to why this will be an improvement over existing conditions, and I just wanted to share that.
Yes, the Walgreens may or may not go in, but we also have to remember, if they do move, something else is going to fill those locations, and we don't know what that will do to the traffic. We don't know what kind of stores they're going to let in there into the old Walgreens, what's going to go where Blockbuster's been. Some of those areas are vacant, and that's another thing to consider.
There's no further comments, and I think we already suggested that we move this on to the next meeting for a final vote.
Thank you. We'll do that.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda was the video gaming for new business, and I think I would ask our village attorney to comment on that, if you would, Mr. Maras.
At the la, pardon me, at the last meeting, there was extensive discussion regarding video gaming, some of the legal restrictions relative to controlling it. We talked about the fact that the idea of coming up with an ordinance that would prohibit an undue economic concentration would be contrary to what the board's original basis was, because that would have to be applied to existing bars and restaurants that have liquor licenses, as well as new uses. And also, it would be difficult, I use the term "the devil's in the detail" relative to what would be too much. So, we didn't talk about those things. I did mention that, that there is a loophole that I see in the current ordinance, that as these towns have been dealing with the issues, you see, and that is the current format in our ordinance, as well as in the state Video Gaming Act, is if you have a liquor license, then it's pretty much automatic that you would get a video gaming license. And so, a potential applicant for a liquor license, whose intent on getting video gaming could not disclose that intention to the village, get their liquor license and then add it, and you would then lose your opportunity to control it. And we talked about, well, what is that opportunity? And our ordinance deals with controlling it through our- And our ordinance deals with controlling it through our liquor control ordinance. And we talked about having basically three of varying degrees of discretion that this board would look at. And in most cases, unless they already have a special use for liquor at a given location, they would need to get a special use, a zoning decision relative to get a liquor license in a business district. They would need this board to create a license for the classification that they're seeking. And finally, the mayor, acting as the local liquor commissioner, would decide whether or not to grant the license. And I pointed out that there has to be good cause not to grant it with respect to the liquor commissioner, and that was your greatest level of control. Now, since then, there was a letter that was received, I think placed in your packet, by a potential applicant who was before you, I think it was the Maxine petitioner, who has another facility in another town, and pointed out that, that they have seen in certain towns, and this can be throughout the country, so it may not be limited to just Illinois, the potential for maybe limiting video gaming based on a square footage. So for instance, if this board feels that if it's too small or not enough seats, that perhaps, at least going forward on a go-for, go-forward basis, that perhaps there's, is there the potential to say that you can't have a license unless, a video gaming license, unless there's at least, for example, 1,500 square feet? Again, or at least so many seats? I think that was alluded to in the letter from, I believe is in your packet. There's also, we've seen in some towns, that you only get one machine per so many square feet. So no more than one machine, for example, you know, per 400 square feet. And that's a possibility, at least relative to the very small type potential video gaming operations where that's really all they're doing, where it's not video gaming ancillary to food service and alcohol, but rather primarily just the video gaming and then food and alcohol is ancillary to that. Those, whether you do that or not, it does go back a little bit to the discussion about whether or not the village has concurrent jurisdiction with the state. But I do believe that those, if that were the board's inclination, that those would be closer to the mark and more easily defensible than trying to come up with comprehensive, a comprehensive dual type of ordinance that mirrors what the state does, where we have our own regulations and then talk about undue concentration, where then it's just a horse race in a given area between your existing licensees and the new ones who come in, and you get too many in, you know, one area. You, you know, and, and the areas are different, you know, there, there are certain areas, say 59, which in theory, there could be more, as opposed to maybe other areas. And so the, I was trying to dissuade, or I wasn't, just not in favor or the notion of the undue constant, undue economic concentration, because that was something that was talked about a while ago. And so what you have before you is simply the closing of the loophole, and I drafted the memo, and well, drafted the ordinance to close that loophole. That's what's before you this evening. The notion of some other ideas that, again, rely on an argument that could be challenged, but it's on a, you know, on the assumption that we have concurrent jurisdiction with the state, to also look at further regulations relative to setting a minimum square foot for a facility that could have a video gaming license. Again, you're not just relying on alcohol, it's riskier from defending that type of a regulation, because it relies on an argument that we have concurrent jurisdiction, it's not the exclusive purview of state. But it's not as onerous, and there's, there's a stronger argument, if that's something the board wants to consider, we could look at further amendments like this. You could either close the loophole first, then we come back with that, or we could bring it together with adding square footage type, but have to look at where we fit it into the ordinance and the village code, if it's just liquor or more in our separate section where we're regulating just video gaming. Because right now, as I told you, if they have the prerequisite ordinance, I mean licenses from the state, a state liquor license, a state video gaming terminal operator's license, and a Bartlett liquor license, it's automatic, and there's no basis for the village administrator not to issue a video gaming license. Hence the reason for the closing of the loophole. But there's, we can look at, at a future time, you know, given some direction if the board is concerned with too small a location. Because we've seen towns where they want to have a boutique license, given that town, and they want to have them just in small spaces. They don't want it in, in bigger locations. So it kind of depends what your goals and preferences are and direction, and we can try and, you know, further limit it beyond what we have here. But this is what I, what you have before you is what we talked about last time. Some of these other ideas have come from third parties or staff looking at, you know, other towns. As I say, the act is so new, towns are reacting, and I don't think anyone knew that, that there'd be an influx of out-of-town type national companies that would be the first ones in, and, you know, that's what we'd see first.
And everyone would be grandfathered in that, say, is too small to hold five?
No, that's the problem. So if you're going to go there, it's a license, again, you can't favor in-town compared to out-of-town. So whatever that size is, that's going to apply to everyone.
So they would, they might have to go back and lose a machine or two if they were a certain lower square footage, is what you're saying?
Well, typical space.
Why can't we grandfather? I don't understand that.
Because you can't favor your existing licensees to out-of-town licensees.
Okay.
Some, and then on the other side of the coin, there's some vested rights that people have who've already applied. So for instance, what's before you this evening that are the two other items, can't retroactively apply the size limitation there. You may have the ability to deny it based on the other issues we already talked about in terms of liquor license control, special use control. So.
So any other questions by the board?
Yes. So I kind of understand where we're going with all of this. One of your suggestions is that the, the board would make a determination as to the minimum square footage required for, well, as a condition of a video gaming license.
Yes, and that has some inherent risk in it, but yes.
And that's when we get into the concurrent jurisdiction?
Yes.
Issue with.
To do that, you have to make the first argument that you have the authority via concurrent jurisdiction to do it, but yes.
God bless Home Rule.
Yes.
But that only takes you so far.
Yes.
At what point, and I, and I think you kind of touched on this, at what point does a video gaming establishment become video, a video gaming establishment as a principal use under the zoning ordinance? Because it seems like, you know, on the one hand, we're talking about this in terms of the license, but on the other hand, the real, the real concern from the public health, safety, and welfare perspective, and something that we would probably be in a little better position to defend on, would be, you know, video gaming as a, as a principal or accessory use.
The current, well, when I looked at the issue before, the way the act works, it's so tied to the issuance of a liquor license, they don't come out and say that your zoning ordinance can't control. I've seen towns that would argue that it's an accessory use, and then you get into, they have to look at what our percentage, sometimes it ties into, I don't recall if we have a, like a percentage of floor area, as to what your accessory use can be compared to the principal use. So that's something to look at. But again, it's still a special use for the liquor, whether or not they need another special use. Currently, we don't have video gaming as a special use, and I question whether we may have the authority to do that, to just make it, there's some open question to that. But I do think, looking at it from the angle of principal use versus accessory use, may have some merit. May be something we could look at.
The legal talk kills me.
Sorry.
Essentially, what we're saying here is, is that you're saying that you can potentially, and just so everybody in the room understands what we're trying to do, is making sure that everybody that wants to get into this in a business in Bartlett knows the playing field. And that's really the only fair thing to do as a village, right?
Yes.
And we also want to make sure that, that as the board, we're doing our responsibility to represent everybody in Bartlett's best interest. So if I understand you right, Trusty Rankie, you're saying that you're potentially looking at zoning ordinance for usage purposes as one of the determining factors, and that would probably need some more research?
Yes.
And then, and what we're suggesting on this new ordinance is primarily square footage?
Right now, we didn't, don't address the issue of square footage.
Yeah, yeah, not really.
This, this particular ordinance that's before you is to close the loophole. That's what we talked about last time. I did not get into square footage, I, you know, staff would have to look at, give me some, give us some more input as to what square footage is, the typical spaces are, and things of that nature.
So just to.
So that issue of square footage came up from a third party.
Yeah.
After we talked about this.
This particular ordinance suggests that if somebody's going to apply for a license in the future, they have to indicate.
Right.
The usage.
Right.
Up front.
Up front.
Up front, and then, you know, so we know.
And could.
So they don't sort of backdoor get the license and then.
Trusty Rankie, put in your, what is the word you use, most common use, that what they're going to use the facility for primarily?
Right, the predominant use. I guess what I would argue is that at some point, an establishment, we'll call it a bar, isn't a bar anymore, it's a separate use, it's a video gaming establishment, and the liquor license is kind of academic. And that's something probably Jim could talk more about, you know, zoning speak in terms of what's a use and everything. But I think from our perspective, we can make a legislative judgment that certain establishments are different.
With some of our liquor licenses, you have to have a percentage of food service to be able to qualify for a particular liquor license. And so that may be what you're getting at, Trusty Rankie, is that, so these don't become simply bars and video games, that we do have some percentage of food delivery.
The one this evening that had that, I don't recall, I think it was the F, Tokyo Steakhouse, that's a restaurant, they have liquor license, where they have to give the floor plan and a certain percentage. It's our only classification. And there are some towns who don't want to, don't have classifications where they have alcohol without food service. We do unfortunately, if that's where we want to go. So we have several, and we have them out there, and people have them, and they have a vested right to, to what they've already got. There was a, you know, push at one point, if you're going to be a restaurant, get that, that, if that's the class, where there's a limit, you know, there's a floor plan, there's a limit, there's even, as I recall, revenue limits, where alcohol is, I hate to use the term and confuse it, but sort of ancillary to the principal use of a restaurant and food service, as opposed to a bar, which would be a different classification, so.
Can we put another, another line in there, too? If they, you buy the bar, two months later, you turn around and sell it, and now I apply it for the license? It has to be like a two-year waiting period or something like that?
Our licenses are not transferable, so if you change ownership, you start over. You, your license goes away, and you have to start from scratch. It's not, I can't sell the bar and sell the license. The license goes away when the ownership changes and they have to reapply. So that particular loophole is.
Okay, but any one of these that used to have gambling, we'd take the gambling back right away, then?
That's a good question.
Well, on their, on their new license, they would have to state whether or not.
Right.
They were going to, under this ordinance anyway.
Right, right.
They'd have to state whether or not they were planning.
I, I personally think it's one thing if the gambling's already there and new ownership versus, oh, I'm going to set up a bar, and two months later, I'm going to buy it from TL, and now I'm going to apply, but she's not the original owner, so, hey, why, why are you going to refuse me?
But I don't, I think it's just, the liquor license, it seems to me it's just like the state license, whether you buy an existing business, if you buy an existing gaming establishment, you still have to go through all the.
Well, you have to go through.
Steps with the state.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you know, if, if they, you apply, you buy the bar, and, no, I have no intention of setting up a gambling. Two months later, you don't want, you, you were just a shell, now Vince buys the bar, hey, I want, hell, why can't I put gambling in there?
Because he has, he doesn't have that license, he didn't buy the license.
Well, no, but then we have to, we have to find grounds to say no. And if we, if we put something in there, you can't even apply for two years until you've run this, then that kind of, you know, no one's going to, it's going to be less likely they're, so they have someone like TL buy the bar, and then Vince is going to buy it from her. I mean, it's, you know, it kind of takes out a shady element, I think, personally.
It would be like a brand-new business going in anyway.
Not necessarily, you buy, you buy, if someone bought Barox, they, they got a name already, why would they change the name? I mean, you buy companies because they have that name.
Well, it would go away, they'd have to comply with this and give a site plan and apply to the state. If they buy a bar like that to get the video gaming license, it wouldn't be automatic, and they'd have to apply for a new liquor license from us. But there is an element of, you know, people want to sell their bars, and you do, you know, not want it vacant, so you're going to feel that you need to grant the license in some respects. But at that point, they'd say whether they have, they want video gaming under this loophole closer ordinance, if you want to call it that. And again, if they already had video gaming, you know, that would be something that you'd have to consider.
So, so.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Was the consensus that we're going to move forward with this as-is?
That's my question, Brian. The question you're asking us tonight is, do you want to pass this, or move this ordinance forward as-is, or are we going to go around this more?
I would suggest we do, because.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to just move forward with this ordinance now.
I think we should.
We have many more discussions to have.
Have other discussions in this loophole, you know, every, you know, there can be, people in the loophole, in the pipeline apply, now they may have certain rights as to that. So I would get this passed. We can explore and look at what we've got out there, if the board wants to bring it back at some point to look at, square footage limitations, table limitations, if that's something the board wants to see. That's just, that came up after the fact, but we put it in here because it came in, and, you know, I was, we would, staff would need to do more work at looking at what's out there. So with that.
I guess then, my take on this for your committee is just exactly what he said, I'd like to see this move forward on to a final vote, and let's continue to ask Brian and the staff to really, I mean, clearly, this is an important topic, at least to me, I think the rest of the board, and let's keep our eyes and ears open for other opportunities and options that we might have, and bring them back to us as, as they come up, that would be.
Unfortunately, most of the things that I think that we're talking about are going to be unprecedented for years. You're not going to know if you're going to get sued if you restrict a license based on square footage, you're not going to know if you're going to get sued based on whatever until it, until it actually comes down the pipe.
And to use the phrase from Facebook, we don't even know what it is yet.
Right, right, yeah.
So we still, I, I know we're working on collating numbers once they're available, but.
but...
That's true.
We don't really even know what this means to the village, as far as revenue stuff, right?
Correct.
Yep, so why don't we move forward here?
Consensus would be that we move forward to the next meeting, and it's up for a vote.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much. Moving right along.
Can we beat that horse, Lou?
Next item on the agenda is Elsie's Place special use for beer and wine, and I'll move this back to Jim for any information you'd like to relay.
This is the petition from Chuck Knoblock on behalf of LCI Highland of Illinois, and they are requesting for a video gaming and a special use permit to serve beer and wine to open a video gaming slash restaurant facility at our town center. It was discussed at your September 3 meeting, and we also had some video gaming discussion at that meeting, and you continued it to this meeting. But the petitioner is essentially asking for a space within the town center to get a special use. This spot was originally a deli, back in, it was, and it's next to Click Photography. The petitioner's space is a 11-seat restaurant area with five gaming, potential gaming establishments, what they call the entertaining area, entertainment area. They are asking for the Class B liquor license, and once they, if they get a Class B license, they would be able, eligible to apply for the state video gaming license. Again, their proposed hours of operation are coinciding with our liquor license, which would be eight to one, and Friday and Saturday, eight to two. They originally talked about they would not probably be open that long. The parking center, the parking for town center has 161 spaces, there would be 10 spaces necessary for this space, there's ample parking there. The petitioner also has a, without, I won't go through all these, because they have a proposed PowerPoint that they'd like to show you, and Mr. Lindman, who is one of the executives of the company, would like to explain his proposal, and so I'm going to have to get out of this screen, and then pull up their proposal. Let me just minimize this.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a long evening, and I'm happy to run through this if you'd like to see it. It's a little background on our company and, and our history, and what our plans are for Elsie's Place in Bartlett. Lieberman Companies is a 106-year-old business. My brother and I were on the bottom there in the only color picture, are fourth generation in the business, and we currently run our existing operations. Our base of business is in Bloomington, Minnesota, but we've done business in the Illinois community and the Chicagoland area for many years. What is our relevant experience, and why do we, why did we come to this idea? We have, over the course of our history, been in the restaurant business. We owned a chain of snack bars and shopping mall, food courts, under the A&W flag. At one time, we had 270 units in 40 states, which we sold to A&W in 1998. We had locations in Aurora, West Dundee, and Woodfield Mall, for example, in Illinois. On the gaming side, primarily, our experience has been as a distributor of gaming equipment. We've been licensed in a number of states for Class III gaming as a distributor. As we go through the process here, we understand that we can't operate the gaming, but we at least have knowledge of it. Our current business structure, we have a distribution business, where we sell video games, vending machines, and, and sell and process ATMs. We have a game route, where we operate games in bars and restaurants, a finance business, and a investment business. Really, our appeal and why, how we got to this project into Illinois is, you know, gaming and restaurants are part of our company history. When Illinois opened up for gaming, we saw an opportunity here. Obviously, you've seen, based on the applications from other companies like ours, we're not the first of the party, but we believe our food experience will give us an opportunity to do some things that will make us a little bit different. And we're a fourth-generation entrepreneurial company that look forward to working with Bartlett and other communities as we move forward. Our menu, you know, a picture of our menu we have here, we have some renderings, this is actually some renderings of the Bartlett space, obviously, you know, we have a little bit of work to do related to what we're going to do moving forward, but this is pretty close to what we'll be doing. And one of the features that we have in our locations is we'll have historical pictures of Bartlett or the communities that we're in as part of our design package. There's just another picture showing you how we would envision the gaming setup, our signage, floor plan that was up before, just to give you a little idea of what we're envisioning And as I mentioned earlier, we're not strangers to the Illinois market, because we're based in Minnesota, we've had experience. We owned a distribution business for records and CDs and videocassettes in Elk Grove, our restaurants, we're based in Illinois. We had a parts business in Bensonville for a period of time, and through our distribution business, we have a number of vendors that we currently byproduct for, for our distribution business in the Chicagoland area. So the Chicago market is, is very familiar to us, the process, as you mentioned, with the liquor license and the gaming license, it's all a part of what you have to go through, and we feel that we have an opportunity in the market and in Bartlett, and we hope we can move our, our project on to the next level. I appreciate your time, so.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a few. You say you've been in, in business for 106 years, that you have a facility in Bensonville. Is that facility a gaming establishment?
No, we had a, we had a business in Bensonville one time. I was just showing you the, some of the business interests that we've had in, in the area.
But that was not a gaming establishment?
No, it was a, it was an unrelated business to the gaming project. It was a replacement parts business, selling a variety of products for the amusement and vending industries.
How many employees will you have on premises at any one time?
Depending, depending on, you know, the volume of traffic, one to two.
One to two?
Yep.
Are these, are these foods distributed by machine?
No, we're going to have, well, we're going to have convection oven, microwave, roller grill, we're not going to have a hood or a full kitchen per se, but we are going to have products that we're familiar to making with, in some of our past businesses. And Chuck Knoblock, who talked to you last week, who's our operations manager, also has some other products that he's dealt with in his vast experience in the restaurant business that we'll be putting forward also.
And what is, who is your target consumer?
Target consumer is, I would say, men and women between the ages of 45 and 65, may skew a little older, but that's our primary target.
Okay. Your hours of operation that you requested are until 1:00 a.m. on weekdays and 2:00 a.m. on weekends, which matches our particular liquor ordinance. Are you, are you fully aware that this, this space lies directly beneath residential, residential zoning?
Apartments.
Yes.
And how will this affect them?
I don't believe they will have a major impact on the residents in the area.
But you don't have any, any evidence to support that, is that correct?
I don't have any evidence to support that, based on, you know, the location and the area that we're looking at is new to us, and our experience related to this is many people in this market are finding is a new project. But I believe that when we started to look at areas where we thought we would be a good fit, that did not discourage us from moving forward with a lease.
Have you, have you met any of your potential neighbors in the town center?
I have not, you have, Chuck?
Yeah, I, I talked to the gentleman at Toot Toots and the gentleman at the liquor store, and I think there's a spa or something next door. I walked through the, the entire area, and I also sent out those cards to the, that was required. But back to your last question, you know, and I think one of the other trustees asked that last time, you know, when you look at the demographics of who we're dealing with, you know, we're not going to have loud music and, and, you know, all these neon signs in the window and things like that. It's, when you look at who you're looking to target, you know, you're looking to have a casual, safe environment where people can come and relax and have a sandwich and do some gaming for a little while, so. And when I did those hours with Jim, it was, you know, the idea was to stay within the city ordinance of what the hours allowed. If the business doesn't dictate being open till 1 o'clock, you know, we've already found in some other communities, opening at 8:00 in the morning doesn't work, we will, we will address that back. But when we filed the, the, the business license, it was to stay within what the city would allow.
What's your projected sales tax income, or sales tax bill, so to speak? What kind of sales tax revenue are you, are you going to generate to the state?
That's like shooting blind.
This, you know, we have some projections that we've done, and, you know, and I don't have that in front of me at this time, but the state of, of the gaming revenue, the state, the location, the operator split that 100% of the revenue. And, you know, to be honest with you, off the top of my head, it's a good question. I mean, I can provide you with some projections if you'd like them, but I don't, I don't have that in hand at this, at this meeting.
How did you pick Elsie's?
It's my grandmother's name.
Is it?
It was, yeah.
Well, that's terrific.
Mr. Lieberman, I have one.
I have to...
It was very scientific, so.
In case you couldn't tell from my tone, I think we have enough gaming establishments, but we can't legislate against your coming into town. I think that you're, and forgive me, don't take this personally, I think all gaming focuses on a certain age group, which you have already described, and it's like, it would be like going to the convenience store as opposed to going to the department store. So what you're offering is a quickie, and the boat is offering a more widely varied gaming experience. So I, I think that, boy, I had to say it, I don't, I, I wish you weren't here. I wish we didn't have all these gaming applications, because I don't think they do the town any good whatsoever. Now, in light of that, and to back that up, I'm going to ask you immediately, if you do come into town, are you going to join the chamber, and are you going to be a very supportive member of the chamber? Would that be within your purview?
I will say that Mr. Knoblock lives at Streamwood, and is in, in Bartlett, and has been in Village Hall many times, and we would support the communities that we're in, it is in our nature to do so.
Okay, but, but you're just going to have, where is, where's your corporation?
We're based in Bloomington, Minnesota.
Well, that's a long way away, isn't it?
That's what my wife thinks as well, so.
What we find a lot of times is that we get the, the non-resident business owners, and we, and the village actually doesn't get any support from them at all. So I want to also warn you ahead of time, I got your number, so if you do come into town, you'll be called to participate, whether it's just money or it's physically, okay? Thank you.
Understood.
Mr. Lieberman?
Yes.
Obviously, you were here earlier, and you heard our discussion. On your square footage, will you still be there if we only allow three machines? I mean, that's if we went with a suggested 400 square feet.
It, you know, it's, it's something we would have to discuss internally, because our modeling is for five machines. And, you know, to be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that we would walk away from a great opportunity, which we feel Bartlett is, but we would have to consider that in our internal discussions.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah. Very briefly. First of all, thank you for considering our town for your business. As with many other communities, we're certainly looking to bring in as much business as we can. That being said, you can tell by the discussions here this evening, that this is a very sensitive topic for members of the board. And so I propose, I guess, one question, perhaps a follow-up to that to you. The name of your project is Elsie's Restaurant, correct?
Elsie's Place.
Elsie's Place.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and so I guess my question to you is, if you were to categorize this, would you categorize this as a restaurant concept, or is this a gaming establishment?
Well, considering our primary background in this experience is in restaurant, I would say restaurant with gaming, restaurant first.
That wasn't an option I gave you.
No, I mean, restaurant, restaurants is, as I showed you in my PowerPoint, is our background and our experience, our primary experience.
Okay.
Well, but with that noted, looking at your menu, I can't say that we'd have to say that you were a very upscale restaurant, just looking at what you're offering on the menu. Seems like things you're going to have would be wrapped in plastic and thrown in a microwave, and then served to people, is that correct?
I would say that our, you know, in anything that you do in life, you try and focus on things that you know and understand, and the type of foods that we have proposed are things that we know and understand from our past history. If you go, for instance, to Dunkin' Donuts and look at their, their operation, they have microwaves and convection ovens, they don't use any high-tech machinery to, to get their food to, to the table, so, you know, to a degree, we feel like we are trying to bring a style of product and a type of opportunity that we know and understand.
Other questions from the board before we open it to the audience?
I would just make one comment, and I think it alludes to Trustee Aaron's comment regarding how many staff you have present. It's my understanding that there's got to be somebody within eye shot all the time somebody is gaming. And if you have one person in there that's turned around cooking or whatever, trying to run dishes out here or there, I could see that as being problematic to actually staying within that constraint of what the law requires. Were you familiar with the requirement?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, with an eye shot? Because I noticed that you had one, one staff member proposed as well, so that seems to be a little problematic with, especially if you have five machines running and you got food going different places.
I don't think it's a 21 and over establishment too, which I'd asked earlier. So that we, there should be no kids in there. Are...
Yeah, there would not be any.
True. What if somebody brings a child?
Ask him.
What if somebody brings a child?
All, Chuck has been BACIT trained, we also, will have our staff BACIT trained in, as well, it's a, it's not a, it's an over 21 location. They will have to have an understanding of, you know, what our standards are and our goals are, and, and, you know, you have to, sometimes you have to make, as a manager or worker, tough decisions, but the right decisions, and our staff will be trained and are, to do the right thing, so.
So, so if you received any opposition in enforcing that, you'd have to call it pleased?
Well, you'd have to hopefully be able to resolve it within the staff that you have, and if it, if it went to that level, you'd have to do what you had to do to get it resolved.
Any other questions by the board? Thank you then, Mr. Lieberman.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, open this up to the audience.
Hi, I'm DJ Mills and I live at 241 South Main Street in at 208, which is in the Bartlett Town Loft, in the very front section. And first, I welcome all businesses to Bartlett. I think Bartlett's a great town. But with that said, I have some major concerns with the, the gaming and the liquor coming in to specifically the town center. Number one, there are 16 resident units that we own our lofts upstairs. Okay, we own those. To date, we've lost 50% of our value just due to the economy. And so my concern is having a gaming restaurant with liquor open till 1:00, I think is going to hurt the value of our condos. That's my personal opinion. Number two, being open till 1:00 in the morning, I mean, really, try to respect the people that live above you. Back in 2006, when this town center was filled, which was a great, you know, great year, 2006 and 2007, and then 2008, the economy changed. But when we have La Doi Chivita, and they were open really late, Unit 201 and 202 could not sleep at night because the music was so loud. And then you could smell the cigarette smoke. So, and that building, the way it's made, we don't have really good soundproof, okay? And it's been an issue for a long, long time. So during the summer months, we're not going to be able to have our windows open because of the noise level. Number two, we have the liquor store. The liquor store was robbed at 9:30 in the evening last year. So I wonder with people gambling per se, you know, and drinking, if that's going to create rowdiness. The next thing is that we constantly, as owners, are picking up liquor bottles, Lotto tickets, just from people purchasing from the liquor store. With a gaming, you know, again, that's going to be my concern. With 16 units, condo units, are you guys aware that there are nine children under the age of 12? From two years up, two-year-olds to kids in first grade, second grade, and they're coming home from school. I wonder about their safety and the fact that they go to bed, you know, 8:00, 9:00 because they have to start school. With, you know, an establishment being open till 1:00 in the morning and the noise level, I don't think that's fair to us as residents. I think this is, it's a great concept, but take it in a strip mall. And, I mean, we're, the police department is right here. This is great. You know, we feel safe in that, that respect. But what, what's the ratio of parking? With 16 units, and if they're married couples and all 16 units are married, that's 32 spots. We already have parking problems with the town center. People park in our specific parking space anytime the fire barn has a, a party or, or something. Or a lot of times because of the farmer's market, people park in our spot. So how are we going to control that? So that's another issue. Being bottlenecked in, in this area with the lights and stuff, especially around the dinnertime hour, I'd be really, really concerned about that. The, I just, I'm very concerned about the noise level. And the, oh, the other thing too, is Tutu's is very children-friendly. And then we have a great eye doctor, and she treats children too. And then we have the liquor store. I thought the, the reason we had the town center was to bring people to town. We have the parade, we have the art fair, usually around here. We have the farmer's market. I just don't think that this gaming is in the right section of town. I mean, that, that is my biggest concern. I, I understand the town center is empty. I used to be in there as well as everybody else. And it was a great center in the life of those years, but it's not. And let's bring in some businesses that can just grow, but grow with our community and be children-friendly. And I don't think this is children-friendly. I think if the age bracket is 21 and older to 65 and to 1:00 in the morning, I'm totally against this because I live there and I know what the noise level is. I know what the garbage level is. So please just consider that when you're, you're making your decision. Thank you.
As always, I'm too outspoken. Most of you know that I come up here and speak for a number of things, but you may also know I'm an EDC commissioner. One of the things we're charged with is to try and drum up business for the downtown. You don't know a lot about me personally, and that's because there's really no need. One of the things that I am passionate about is where gambling belongs and my view on drinking. I dated somebody who was an avid gambler and she found a way to spend every dime I made. Back then, I was making good money. Now, most people know I'm dirt poor. Funny thing is, I'm not anti-gambling. I just believe there is a place. I also realize the state says, you have to allow it in our town. The previous administration said, okay, we're going to do it. This new administration is much more conservative. Part of my job as an EDC commissioner is to welcome everybody into this town, whether they have gambling or booze, or they want to have a child-friendly establishment, et cetera. I totally understand what that lady's saying, and yet I understand the businesses. I ambushed Eric last meeting, as he was supposed to go to a special commission, because I was aggravated that we basically told two businesses that wanted to come in, you got to hold off. I mean, here's the irony. I, in looking for work, I also run a big Facebook group, a 4,000 online Facebook gamblers that gamble no money. It's just playing on Facebook. So I'm not adverse to the machines. But I totally understand where, like Greg said, we don't want a little less Vegas. I think at the time they were talking about these machines, I think I heard like the maximum payout is 200 bucks. Anybody that really wants to gamble, they're going to go to Elgin or Aurora or Joliet or Indiana or wherever, with the Indian reservations, because these diehard gambling people, they want to make, they want to go and blow a lot of money on the chance they're going to hit it rich. It happens, it's not likely. Personally, I wish that we had no video gaming in Bartlett. I wish that we had a lot of restaurants that just served maybe wine and soft drinks, maybe beer. That's just my personal taste. I think that one of the dangers I see here, and maybe it's not part of the village's problem, maybe it's a state problem, is that video gaming licenses seem coupled with liquor licenses. I wish that there was a way that they were separate, so that you could provide a person who wants to open a restaurant and serve booze, the chance to do so, and make the gam, the video gaming be a totally separate process. Because we're denying businesses because they may, this last gentleman, he said right up front, he really wants to have those machines. But some of the places, well, it's a nice to have. As Eric said and some of the, some of the others, last meeting, they were talking about, do we have any studies? Well, it's too new. We don't have studies yet. Is this a big revenue booster? This guy from Minnesota, he could probably tell you better because he's been doing it a while. But anybody around Illinois, they really don't know. I think it's a slippery slope any way you cut it. You can't deny them being in town. You want to be business friendly, but we come across as we're business hostile. I, I don't know the answer. I mean, you want to accommodate the residents. You want to bring business in. You don't want loud music and whatnot, but he said they're not gonna. What is the answer? And I think we're, we're trying to put a lot of band-aids on something that really is like poorly architected. It's just my two cents. Any other comments from the audience? I actually have a email that was sent to me from the manager of the loft condominium units, who couldn't be here tonight since he's, he's traveling. But I'll read his email. His name is Scott Sutter. He is the owner of a residential condominium unit in the Bartlett Town Center Loft Building at 241 South Main Street. He currently manages the Bartlett Town Center Loft Association, as well as the Bartlett Town Center Condominium Number Three Association at 275 East Railway, Railroad Avenue. He gives some detail about the history of the actual complex, but I'll skip through that. The proposed location for Elsie's Place is directly beneath Loft Number 213, located at 241 South Main Street. The 241 Main Street Loft Building sits directly above the commercial building and currently has one entrance directly next to the town, to the town liquor store, located on the south end of the building, as well as back entrance located near the northeast corner of the building. The loft building is comprised of 16 condominiums. The residential building locating at 241 South Main Street currently has 14 children under the age of 16 residing in it. The consensus among the unit owners and residents of Bartlett Town Center Loft Building at 241 South Main Street, it is that permitting an establishment where the primary business activity is video gaming in such close proximity to a residential condominium building is not a good idea. He goes on to say that the words and phrases destination, location, family-friendly are commonly associated with Bartlett Town Center, and I believe that such sales pitch that brought Tutu's, a children's family diner, into town. I do not believe that liquor stores and gaming parlors were part of the original vision for a mixed residential-commercial building. At the time of construction seven years ago, video gaming was not legal in Illinois. What I believe is most important is that the planning commission understand the decision made today will greatly impact the future look, fill, and future business activity that takes place or doesn't take place in the Bartlett Town Center, as well as Bartlett as a whole tomorrow. Proper planning needs to be proactive, not reactive. And he signs it respectively, Scott J. Sutter. That being said, is there anyone else from the audience? Any other comments from the board? And personally, I too would say that I have a, some sincere issues with, you know, I ran on the fact that I'm pro-business. I want to see business come into town. I want to see business succeed. But it concerns me when business such as this comes into a residential area in close proximity to children and the type of values that we're instilling into our, our community. So I would suggest that we go ahead and move this to a plan commission, but I do it with a certain degree of regret. That being said, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
That would be Maxine's Special Use Beer and Wine. Jim, take it again.
This is the second video gaming establishment proposal you have in front of you. Gary Leff with Laredo Hospitality. This one is for the Brewster Creek Shopping Center at Sterns and 59. It's again, a special use permit to serve beer and wine in that location. This is actually the area where the former Blockbuster site was a part of that. Site is occupied by Sherwin-Williams, and this will fill that existing space, the remaining existing space. Again, their petition in the Brewster Creek Center, their floor plan's a little different. They are established, they are having 30 dining area seats with five gaming stations, with seats at the gaming stations. This is a, again, a Class B liquor license for beer and wine only. And then once they get their license, if they do, they would apply for the state. Maxine's is, got some renderings, and I won't go into all these because they too have a PowerPoint presentation, but they are also affiliated with Stella's, and they will go into that. Mr. Leff is here. There's 185 parking spaces, and they would require 21 for this use. So.
Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Trustees. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Gary Leff. I'm CEO of Laredo Hospitality. With me is Charity Johns. She's our VP of Operations. Before we get into Maxine's, just a little bit about ourselves. We're a restaurant hospitality folks. We've collectively been in the business, Charity and I, for over 50 years, believe it or not. And we have a team that has another, you know, 30 years or so of experience in the restaurant industry. Just a couple of highlights from our, our careers. I started a concept in the 90s called Skr Crazy. It was a full-service Pan Asian restaurant. Closest location to here would be Woodfield Mall in Schaumburg. Grew that to 10 units, sold that back in 2006. Have been involved in numerous projects since. Most recently led the consumer experience, so the design development of the front-of-house experience and all the branding for River. So I developed all seven bars and restaurants there and the overall branding. Charity, prior to joining Laredo, was a VP of Operations for Cozy Sandwich, or Cozy Cafe. Cozy's a cafe sandwich shop with over 140 locations nationwide. Prior to that, she was with Jamba Juice as a VP of Operations and started early on her, in her career at Starbucks. I'm going to let Charity take you through some of the presentation now.
Good evening. Wow, what a meeting. So I'm going to try to kind of go through and hopefully highlight for you what is different about our family of brands and a little bit about our organization that we think differentiates us and would be a good fit for Brewster Creek in, in Bartlett. As you're probably already aware, Stella's Place is my mid-century modern gal. She is sort of in the 60s era. And she is a cafe, and I refer to her as she, because each one of these brands has their own personality. And as you enter the space, you sort of get the feel of a living room, family room combination working with an odd, with a nod to sort of mid-century modern finishes for today's person. Shelby's, well, she is a little bit of vintage Americana. She happens to be my favorite out of the family of brands. Gary tends to like Stella. And then we have the rest of the team kind of voting and cheering on Maxine's. Shelby's is a little bit more of a vintage farmhouse look and feel. You'll see that it has finishes much like your current Pottery Barn does. And so it takes on a completely different look and feel in sort of the sense that it's a little homier, and I find it to be sort of how my house is stylized. Perhaps that's why I like it so much. Maxine's is from the era that I, I really sort of resonate with my dad and my mom. It's sort of that 50s Rat Pack era, the music I grew up listening to. And has that sort of black and white look and feel on the wall, finishes, but is a little bit moodier and slightly more hip, if you will. We're here to talk about Maxine's because in Brewster Creek, we thought this was a really good complement to the Stella's that we're already bringing to town. Because it has sort of that more rich, sort of warm feeling inside, there's a level of camaraderie that you can feel in the space. And these are actual renderings. I am going to show you some real pictures of our fully built-out Stella's and Hoffman Estates here. But what you'll really unders, take a look at sort of in our design and development is the way the space works together. The cafe and dining area is really up front with the counter sort of in the center there. And then you'll see in the rendering, the picture up top, he has a bookcase separation, which right now is not appointed with the artifacts of the era, but will be. One of my favorite passions is shopping for vintage wares that fit into that schematic. And then beyond that, where you see the gaming area. I highlight the gaming area because I associate that with what we've done in all of the restaurants and brands we've been a part of, is really appointing it to have finishes that people would appreciate. Much like your bowling alleys are doing right now. I grew up in the bowling business, and we certainly didn't have those fancy shoes and lanes and people serving us at the lanes. I think if my dad would have thought of that, maybe we would have stayed in business a little longer. But we also, I would associate that with what movie theaters are doing now. Your, your chair reclines, you can put your soda. Actually, I think my mom told me she got a glass of wine the other day at the movie theater. So this gaming area is really sort of designed for true entertainment value. Has a plush chair. It has a complete station where you can plug in your cell phone. It has a swing arm table. There are movable ottomans so you can game with friends. So if you are a gamer... So if you are a gamer, it really is a place that you can go and really enjoy yourself. If you're not a gamer, up front in the cafe area, we have a really fantastic menu, one that Gary and I worked really hard on designing so that we could bring food and beverage into the establishment that was easy to execute, easy to eat with friends, shareable plates, but also something that people would enjoy. And, you know, we did some fun things. We have deviled eggs on the menu and maybe some other things that are from the era that people sort of enjoyed as they were growing up. I like deviled eggs, so I think they're delicious. So then I'll take you on to the next. That is our menu. It has a lot of light bites, minis. Minis to me right now are sort of what's hip in food and beverage. They're the small sliders, if you will. They're light bites. We have flatbread pizzas. But everything is somewhat shareable. So you'll see a spinach and artichoke dip. You'll see Bavarian pretzels with cheese dip. You'll see chicken wings. But at the same time, you'll also see beef sliders, chicken sliders, and things that people can sort of share amongst each other. The other thing that I think is a little bit unique is, and a little nod to the past is we've incorporated some classics, if you will, but they're with a new spin. So they're also in sliders, but we will put things like an egg salad or tuna salad for lunch on sliders because we know people kind of enjoy that as a lunch fare. Breakfast is a full breakfast menu, freshly, fresh omelet sandwiches on bagels with roasted peppers, some with sausage, some with plain and cheese. Hot cinnamon roll, things of that nature are also on the menu. We have a full espresso beverage menu, cappuccino, lattes, espresso, as well as beer and wine, and then, of course, your soft drink offering. I think one of the trustees had asked about the age demographic. I kind of think about this as a place my mom and I could go. I know you can't tell, but I'm in my mid-forties. So that usually gets a chuckle. What's wrong with you guys tonight? I know. So, so, that's fine. But I, but I usually think of this a place that my mom and I could go. I have a ten-year-old. She's not welcome. I take her lots of places, and I adore her. But this is a night out with my sister, or with my mom, or with friends that I can sort of enjoy myself. I'm not a loud bar person. I loved them when in my twenties, liked them in my thirties, can't stand them in my forties. So it's a place that I can go now. And I love that about this. It's highly stylized. It has great personalized service. You know, Gary and I talk about our corporate culture, and it's really about cultivating relationships through personalized service. So we get to know you in the space, and it feels like yours, your place to go. And that's really important to us as we build the brands. This is an actual Stella's. So this is what Stella's looks like inside. So you see the swooping countertop and sunup of the very geometric shapes. It's very mid-century. This is our Hoffman Estates location. So you'll see it has a completely different look and feel than Maxine's deliberately, but the space works the exact same so that there is twenty-one and older. And then you'll see there's Shelby's.
For the sake of expediency, could we maybe stick to the, to the
Yep.
place that you're suggesting?
That's Maxine's, which we went through. And then, and then I'll let Gary wrap it up with the design team.
Yeah, we don't need to spend much time on the design team. It just, we put together what we consider a world-class design team, more important when we are just showing renderings. Same team that I worked with on developing all the food and beverage units out at Rivers Casino. So this is a well-done establishment. We're investing a significant amount of money. It's not just about the gaming. We think the cafe experience is very important. Again, it's an experience for those people that want an adult experience and not just go into a bar. We're going to have other entertainment. We'll have a half a dozen iPads available for people that they can use to play free games, read the newspaper, and we'll have other apps. We think we may expand that if that becomes popular. So again, it's, the gaming is important, but we think this is, you know, a holistic experience more than just the gaming. And last but not least, just to wrap it up, we're local. Charity and I both live, I live in the city, she lives in a northern suburb. Our office is in Des Plaines. We have a lot, we're highly experienced, but we have a real passion for delivering what we think are, you know, the best experiences out there. We think this provides a unique and attractive experience. And last but not least, we have done the math on tax revenues, and we believe that this will generate, on the gaming side, somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars annually for the Village of Bartlett. And on the food and beverage side, you know, we're anticipating somewhere between, you know, three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars in food and beverage revenue. So that's it.
Any questions from the board?
Not at this time.
I know, we all want to go to bed.
Trustee Cameron, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question, and this really goes, I think, to the sustainability of these kinds of facilities. Because we've seen a couple of different ones, and they're all a little different. And I think what is going to be the issue here is frankly, the food. Because if you, you want to gamble, but you don't have anything decent, decent to eat, you're going to go gamble somewhere else. And you can get that liquor somewhere else. So we've seen some proposals, and a couple that the board has approved, that have real food. They have salads, they have minis. We're all very sort of suspicious of the first proposal here because it was all microwave. And if it's all microwave, frankly, I don't personally think that it's got a lot of survivability. Now, I looked at your menu, and you talked all about, you know, fresh this and fresh that, but I didn't see any kitchen in your plans. And so are you a real restaurant? Are you going to make things fresh? Are you going to bring them in and be a step different from a microwave? I think that's important for the board to think about because I really believe that goes to the heart of sustainability of these establishments.
Right.
People will walk based on their stomachs.
Yeah, we, we would agree with that. And we've, I've been involved in a variety of different types of food and beverage outlets.
I just want to know what this is. Is there going to be any cooking going on, or is it microwaveable?
There is, you know, we're making fresh egg sandwiches, you know, the deviled eggs. We have a blend. We've worked with outside vendors to curate what we think are some of the best products. A lot of our prep is done off-site, just like Cozy. And I don't know how many of you have been to a Cozy. And Charity can talk about their food prep. It's not done, most of that's not done on-site. They're not cooking chicken on-site. They're not cooking proteins on-site. They work with vendors. So a lot of that type of prep is done off-site, which will be the case here. But we will be doing a lot of, we'll be doing some prep on-site and a lot of assembly, and we think our food is good. We're very proud of the food we're serving.
And then just one follow-up question that trustee Aaron's had asked. The other business that I thought was problematic, and that is, how many employees will you have on-site at the same time?
We'll have, again, depending on the hours, anywhere from one to three employees, and a total of eight to ten employees total for the establishment.
And then, I think the problem with that, and the mayor made reference to this, is the state law does require that you have the ability to watch the gaming all the time. And if you've got one person there, and they are pouring beer, and they are making egg sandwiches, and they are watching the thing, that's not going to work.
Yeah, we've consulted with the gaming board on this, and we've toured them through our facilities. One, we're twenty-one and over, and so that
Does not relinquish the obligation to watch it.
It does not. But the way we've designed our facilities, we think we have oversight of both the cafe and the gaming area, whether it's one, two, or three employees in the establishment. And again, we've consulted with the gaming board on it, and we feel very comfortable that we have good coverage and visibility on that. Even if we have one, it's early morning, or, you know, perhaps late at night when it's not as busy, yes. We do believe that.
I just, I just want to clarify. So your proposal is to open a gaming establishment next to the Walgreens at Sterns and 59?
Yes, in the former Blockbuster space. Well, I mean, it's a restaurant slash gaming establishment. Was that a trick question?
Yeah, I'd like a few more traffic studies.
My question might go to the, to the staff here again. Of the facilities coming in, don't we already, do you have another facility that they're proposing?
You're absolutely correct. We have Stella's that the board has approved, and it's waiting, as I understand, it's still waiting for its license, right?
Is this by the same company?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you not catch the Stella's Maxine's?
Well, I did, I did. I'm thinking, so we have, so you have that much confidence in Bartlett that you're preparing, you're proposing to bring in two of these facilities into our, into our city?
We do. We think the demographics, the regional draw, you know, we've looked elsewhere around, you know, a little bit up further in Streamwood, and we've looked elsewhere, and we thought this was the best opportunity. The way we manage our business and put in infrastructure with regional oversight, and, you know, given the small nature of our facility, we were confident that this area supports those two facilities. Again, and that being small, if people do want to game and only five machines, they may, you know, one, they can go over to the other establishment, or two, they may prefer one of our brands over the other brands. So, yes, we wouldn't be making the sizable investment that we're going to make if we didn't believe that it was feasible or a good, you know, good investment decision.
And I'll try my same question. Do you consider yourself a gaming establishment or a restaurant?
We consider ourselves an adult cafe with gaming.
Sounds like Mr. Ryan would give you
We really are. I, I will tell you, we're investing, and I would invite any of you, if you'd like, to come over to Hoffman Estates, which is fully built out, fully appointed. It's not going to feel like a gaming establishment to you. It's going to feel like an upscale cafe.
Where is that?
That's in Hoffman Village at Gulf and Barrington, where the Mariano's is.
Okay.
Not open yet. We plan to be open in the next six weeks, but we'd be happy to, you know, host any of you if you want to get in touch with us, or with me, or Charity. And, you know, I know it's not far from here, and I think you, when you walk in, you would not say, wow, this is a gaming establishment. I'm pretty confident. And we've toured several communities through that establishment, and I think the reactions have been pretty consistent. So, again, everything we do is first-class, premium, and we think we're delivering that here as well.
So any other questions for Mr. Laff?
Gary, where do you live?
I live in Chicago, in the city.
TL wanted to know if you were going to join the chamber?
Of course. We, George, always join the chamber.
There's no questions?
Do you belong to the chamber and where your other place is?
We're just, we've joined some chambers, but again, we're new. We're only over, little over a year old, and given the state of Illinois and how they're issuing gaming licenses, we do not have any locations built yet, or open yet, I should say.
I apologize, I thought you had.
No.
So Hoffman's not open to the public?
It's not open to the public yet.
Six weeks.
Yes, in the next six weeks.
Well, if the board doesn't have any further questions, we'd open it up to the audience then. Thank you, Mr. Laff.
Hi, DJ Mills again. I'm concerned about all this video gaming coming in, especially since it's so close in the, in the area. I mean, we're talking Town Center, we're talking across a street from Bannerman's. What, what doesn't stop Bannerman's to have even more gaming, especially if we're going to do it per square footage? He has a beautiful place, he's doing well, it's big, so
There's a limit to
You have a limit?
Okay, so now we have, if we, if he has gaming over there, now we have a gaming across the street. Now we're going to have one over at Sheep and Fiddles, or whatever. I'm like, what are we trying to do here? Are we trying to just make this like a little bit of a casino here and casino there type of thing? I mean, what are we doing for the kids in the area? What, what kind of businesses are we trying to bring in to help the teenagers stay off the streets and drugs and stuff? I mean, I
With all due respect, I have to tell you that it's not, the Village works very hard at attracting a million different kinds of businesses.
No, I, I understand that.
Well, I kind of take exception to that because I get asked that all the time. Are you just looking for gaming places? Well, no. We would gladly, gladly welcome any kind of business into town. It's just that the, the gaming industry is hot right now.
Right, exactly.
And so that's, that's what we're getting requests for. Just as fifteen years ago, we had at least fifteen different pizza places. And twenty years ago, we had at least that many video rental stores. So, you know, it's cyclical, and we do try to attract others.
Yeah, I mean, the concept sounds great, a restaurant and gaming, but what I hear out of it, it's more gaming than restaurant because this is all prepackaged food.
Just tonight, we just approved Tokyo, Japan's license for liquor license going into Ness Cafe, right across the street. So, I mean, there's, and at the beginning of the night, we spent a long, long time trying to decipher what the game plan was to make sure that we were responsibly offering these establishments to gamble. So once the state says, you can do it if you have a license, then it's onerous on us to try to figure out.
So my concern is, they're all kind of like clustered in one small area of Bartlett. And then the other thing is, we're the only, the Town Center is the only out of the other locations that has residents.
And we do understand your concern, DJ. We appreciate it.
Thanks, CJ.
Thank you.
I won't delay this much longer. I just, you know, one concern that I think you might want to put on the table is, it seems that a lot of people that do gaming, and I don't personally like to bounce between machines, and I certainly would have a concern and maybe want to track this as it goes on, is how many perhaps drunk driving arrests and things we have of people bouncing between these various establishments, all within town. Because this machine wasn't hot, so I'm going to go over to the other place, and I'm going to go to the other place, and I'm going to go to the other place. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
Okay, so we've got McDonald's, we've got the kinder care, and then you want to put an adult gaming establishment in, and then the Taekwondo store, so I can walk my daughter past all that to go to Taekwondo. And on the weekends, I go past Black Jack's to get over to Kohler Field. I mean, another gaming? I think you guys should send, no?
Well, if there's no other questions from the audience, and there's no other questions by the board, then, once again, I would move that we go ahead and plan, move this to the planning commission, and I do it with some degree of regret. But that's, that's it. Hit on the planning and zoning.
That's all you got for me, right? The next item on the agenda, under license and ordinance, is trustee Karen Benaro.
Vince, wake up.
Thanks. To give you three minutes?
That was a good report, wasn't it?
Last item on the
Let me point out that trustee Shipman noted that that's the last item on the agenda.
Whatever you like.
You guys make a motion to move it to
This is for out-of-town caterers liquor license, after receiving the attached letter.
Vince, up to your microphone so we can
This is for an out-of-town caterer's liquor license, after receiving the attached letter from Bruce Suffren, the owner of Banbury Fair. Mayor asked if the Bartlett Liquor Control Ordinance could be amended to reinstate a liquor license for out-of-town caterers, given that few, if any, local caterers hold that old Class K liquor license that are willing to cater weddings at Banbury Fair. Draft ordinance amending the liquor control ordinance, adding an out-of-town caterer liquor license classification is attached for the board's consideration.
You don't need, yeah, read the whole thing. Just briefly, you see the letter from Bruce Suffren. We tried to do this with a Class K and utilize our in-town businesses that had a caterer's license. They already had to have an on-premises liquor license, and then they would qualify for a caterer's license if they chose to. As you can tell from his letter, we, they've tried. There was a couple of businesses that have gotten them, and then because of either the cost, but were, really, the main issue is some of the steps you have to go through with the state, or internally in those businesses with staffing them, they declined to renew those licenses. So what he's found is, he's having trouble getting an in-town caterer to get a Class K and then provide service there. Now, it is not just Banbury Fair. not just Banbury Fair. This is an issue that can affect also the new banquet facility down at, I forget the name, but Nicodinos connected with that. I, when this issue came up, the past village president and had concern with having control. So at a wedding, if, let's say, there were under eight servings of alcohol, what can you do about it? Well, one of the things that you can do is levy a fine, suspend their license, or revoke it. It's difficult to do that if they're out of town. So that, the premise was that we would have more control if they were limited to in-town caterers. And, so that's how it was addressed. It's not working in that regard from a practical standpoint. And so the board did have a Class M, but it was to bail out would-be brides. They had already signed contracts, and so they did have a Class M for a time period. There were no issues with that. But the board was clear when they did it, they sunsetted it, so it went away, and they wanted to go with this, you know, limiting it to the in-town caterers. So what you have before you is resurrecting what we call Class M. It's a little more involved than it was before. And it requires that they be, have a retail liquor license from the town in which they're located, they have a caterer's license from the town, out-of-town, in which they're located, they have a state caterer's license, and they have a Bartlett caterer's license. And then lastly, when you're out of town, the state requires that you have a special use permit for specific dates and times. And so procedurally, if they're out of town, they'll come in, get an M, they have to have the criminal background check and the fingerprinting and all that. The mayor would, once the board, and you'll decide how many Class Ms. to create, but once they have it, it's issued, they have to come back with specific dates and times to show their state liquor license, their state, their special use permit from the state. So there's an extra built-in protection there. So I guess the only, I mean, I'll open it up, or whoever, Vince can open up for discussion, or questions. But the one thing left open in this memo is, do you want to create a certain number of those Ms. upfront, or as they come in each time, you know, I'm applying for an M? Because unfortunately, what we found with some of the wedding planners is, it's always last minute. They hadn't planned that through, and then we're scrambling to accommodate a bride who's, and having a daughter, getting married, there's hell to pay.
Those licenses would still have to come before the mayor.
Yes.
Regardless of what set...
They still have to have the criminal background check.
A limited number or an unlimited number, they still need to come before the board, or more practically, the mayor, in either rate.
Correct. They still have to go through the background check. It's just, would they have to now also, you know, wait for a board agenda to get on to create it, and then, you know, then the background check, you know, and then come forward? So this way, if they were existing, they go through our normal process. The mayor writes a letter to the state saying, I will issue, they'll have a caterer's license, but they won't have the special use. That has to come back again for the specific dates and times, times of the events.
And just so I'm clear too, I don't believe this restricts the existing liquor license holders who have, in the past, turned down Banbury Fair. That doesn't restrict them from providing the service, but...
No.
Not at all?
No.
But what Banbury has found, and I think Nico will find the same thing as he's operating his facility, it's an additional headache for some of these restaurants in the town, I shouldn't say headache, but it's an additional cost and administrative burden for some of the existing places to go above and beyond just catering their own thing.
And they don't have the staff.
Yeah, they don't have the staff to do it.
These are generally Saturday, Saturday nights, and those businesses are doing their own thing.
Right.
It's really been a staffing issue, I think, that's been what Bruce has found is difficult.
Yeah, I think Nico has kind of opened the door to have a catering facility, or a banquet facility here, and we're going to have to have something like this. And then I think Bruce also would increase his business there as well.
His letter pointed out an investment in advertising, you know. The other thing that this does is it reduces the fee. We had a five-hundred-dollar fee for out-of-town, and we had an annual fee for the Class K for in-town. This proposes to make it two-hundred dollars. We can't charge a different fee for out-of-town, but we do have an additional cost, because there's additional work to do the criminal background check, that an in-town guy would already have, a business would already have, because they've got their underlying liquor license. And we'll also have to administer that second go-around of the state, of the special use permit. So there's an additional fifty-dollar fee to the out-of-town. And I guess I'd just point out that the state law does not require the in-town caterers to get that special use permit, you know, where they have to go back and give specific dates. So if they're an in-town caterer under state law, that's what they need. They don't have to then get the special use permit for each separate event. And it has the same provisions, you know, basset trained and all those things. And they'll have a site plan to show where it is.
Do you know how much the special use from the state is? The cost to...
I want to say two-hundred and fifty dollars, but I'm not certain.
So they're looking at five-hundred dollars before they step into Bartlett to at least five-hundred?
But they can do that on an annual basis, so if they get several...
Do more than once, it pays off, okay?
It pays for itself if they get a couple of events, yeah.
Whereas before, they paid five-hundred dollars and they got one shot.
And it might be one event, right.
Okay. Really what we're doing is we're reducing the cost.
And we still, we limited Banbury to six, or was it four?
That still is in their special use ordinance. So they still have a limit on the number they can have in a year.
That was four, right, or is it six?
Six, I think.
Six.
I think it's six.
Six, yeah.
I don't think so.
I don't, is, I don't know, is the fifty-dollar fee enough?
I tried to increase that.
Yeah, he tried. We were going to have quite a bit difference, but we really can't...
It's got to be a pass-through cost.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we were going to have quite a bit higher, or a big difference, and looked at that and can't do it.
When the letter came in, just so you know, full disclosure, I talked with, spoke with Brian a little bit about how you can resurrect this M. In my initial, just to save this in time and questions, you guys might have the same ones, my initial objective was to make it more difficult for outside Bartlett caterers, or not more difficult, but at least provide an advantage to stay in town for these caterers. And you can't, we found that you cannot do that. You have to be equal inside and outside. But they do, like Brian had mentioned, you avoid the extra step of a state's special use, I think, permit if you're in town. Did I...
Yeah, that's correct.
So somebody in town pays roughly two-fifty, somebody out of town pays five-hundred?
No, this is two-hundred in town, essentially two-fifty out of town. So, pretty much the same.
Plus the state's special use permit.
Plus it.
Well, yeah. They have some out-of-town, they have some state charges, I don't, not...
Which our local businesses would not be required to do.
That's right.
So, a local business, a local business to do this would spend about two-hundred bucks. An out-of-town business to do this would spend about five-hundred bucks.
They will also need a state caterer's license, as well as a Bartlett caterer's license. I don't recall that fee. But what they wouldn't need is, for out-of-town, they...
It almost sounds like you're making it more complicated.
They need two, well, the difference is our state law, not us.
Right.
We're not adding any layers of extra licenses on our end. What we did was, we called them out in here, because what we found was, some of our locals got the local, but they didn't know they had to get the state. And then the state said, no, you know, you need to have our state license, you should have known. We put it in here just to almost alert them. But we didn't add a layer that I can't control what the state requirements are.
And I guess, really, if I may, the only question, kind of I have to follow up to this, is, as I recall the original conversations on this a year or so back, the concern was, and then I guess I would ask how do we address this, somebody comes, a licensee comes in, they have an event, that girl's gone wild, and it goes bad. Other than the chief's crew writing a local ordinance citation, what do we have, in the way of enforcement?
Person who did it, levy a fine.
That's the question that I had, but I didn't use girl's gone wild.
Yeah. Levy the fine. Again, remember, they'll have an annual, as all our licenses are one year, they'll have an annual caterer's license. So you can still suspend or revoke that, and you can take that into account whether or not to renew it again. It isn't as much control, because the difference before was, we could suspend or revoke their underlying license. So that's a distinction.
Right.
But they won't be able to cater, and that's it. So that's the difference in control, and that was the issue before that was a big deal, and the distinction that was made, why we had the basis to favor in-town. So we don't have that with this. But you can take away the caterer's license. They can also have some trouble with the state. And so, so that is, you know, the difference. But, you know, it's sort of the trade-off with some control loss, with accommodating businesses to make it viable. I mean, we did try to make that available. It hasn't panned out at work.
Can I ask a question?
Just wouldn't be the same without you, CJ.
I know, I had to. Remember a few months ago when Nico was up here, and he wanted to open a full-time facility? And we put him under a lot of scrutiny. Last year, Bruce came in and he said he wanted to try a couple weddings. One of them was his daughter, and then he wanted to try a couple others, you know, expand his business. Everybody likes Bruce. This is not personal on Bruce. But think about where Banbury Fair is. That's extremely residential. Your strip mall's on 59, you've got housing behind them. But right here, I think that's another concern. You've got a business on the end of a block, a few businesses, Lucky Jack's, whatever, but you've got all that residential. Has there been any dialogue with the residents about him expanding into being more of a banquet facility, in addition to the special licenses? Because last year was to, he had commitments to the brides. He had to get it done. If he's going to expand into that business, I think, just like we did with Nico, we have to make sure that people on Hickory and the other streets, they don't have an issue with this.
He's limited in the special use ordinance that was granted to six events a year because of those.
And when those were granted, he was, people around there were also given the opportunity to probably voice their opinion on those. So that was already passed.
And we did give him some opposition just because of that, and the parking issue, and, you know, everything else that went wrong with it.
He's got to give a permit for the town.
I don't know if he were at all those, at those meetings, but yeah, we gave that an awful lot of scrutiny.
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
Move it on to the next board meeting, Matt.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
One question. Do you want me to put a certain number, like five Ms. in there, start with, or...
I think that would make the most sense.
Five?
Otherwise, we'll have more of these really long.
Five per location, or five for the entire village?
Entire village.
I think five entire, and then if it's individual, they're on...
Nicodinos could potentially be looking for one every other week.
No, they'll only need one.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, because they're... I understand your motion to adjourn. Seconded. Moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Shipman. Clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Hey, we're not done yet.
Yes, yes. Cameron?
Yes.
Harbenaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Shipman?
Shipman, we're not done yet.
Eric?
Shipman.
Eric!
I hear it.
Make your gavel.
Yes, yeah.
Doesn't work.